Everyone. I'll call this meeting of the El Paso Planning County Planning Commission to order. And I am your chair today, Tom Bailey. And my first order of business as always is to introduce the voting members on the commission this morning. And I will start to my far right with Mr. Mraz, Mr. Byers, Mr. Whitney, Ms. Jack, Ms. Fuller, Mr. Trowbridge, Mr. Carlson, and Mr. Shipples are the nine voting members today. We have a full house, which we like to have, although we've shifted this way. And so my angle is a little different and strange, but I will do my best, do my best to get through it. We have... The next thing, we turn to Ms. Harrington. Do you have any notes for us this morning?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Megan Harrington, Planning Director, I do not have any announcements for you this morning. Mr. Kilgore, do you have anything to add that I may have forgotten? Thank you.
No, sir. I will ask the clerk, but I believe our next Planning Commission meeting has a lunch for you all. Say token of appreciation.
The one perk of the office here is for all you in the audience, that's a good day when we can have some lunch. So, thank you very much.
Once a year.
Look forward to that, once a year, whether we need it or not, right? On March 6th, we'll look forward to being back here and deal with that then. Okay. March 6th, like the date on my calendar here. The next item we have, we always make time for public comment on items that are not on our agenda today. I don't see a huge crowd here. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments or address the commission on any items that are not on today's agenda? I don't see anyone. Do we have anyone online listening or watching out there in TV land? No, we don't think so. So we will move on then to Agenda Item 3, the Consent Items. And the first of those is Item 3A, the Adoption of Our Minutes from the Hearing Held on January 16th. I was not able to be with you that day, but I read the proceedings and saw that things went well. Are there any comments or changes or corrections that need to be made to those minutes as presented to us from January 16th? Seeing none, we'll deem those minutes approved as presented and move on to Item 3B, File Number VR246. This is a vacation and replat for Kettle Creek Estates filing number two. Is there anyone, just for curiosity, anyone in the audience other than the applicant here for that item? I don't see anyone. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for staff or for the applicant on that? Being no discussion, I will entertain a motion on File Number VR246.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Carlson.
Mr. Chair, with regards to Agenda Item 3B, File Number VR246, Vacation and Replat, Kettle Creek Estates filing number two, I move for approval in accordance with the attached resolution with four conditions and four notations with a finding of sufficiency for water quality, quantity, and dependability and that this item be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Shipples, thank you. The whole thing is off. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to start at my left now and go through Mr. Shipples.
Aye.
Mr. Carlson.
Aye.
Mr. Trowbridge.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Ms. Jack.
Aye.
Mr. Whitney.
Aye.
Mr. Byers.
Aye.
Mr. Mraz.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. We will recommend this item to the Board of County Commissioners for approval at a vote of nine to zero. And we will move on to... Sorry, my little note here is, I'm missing something, but that's okay. I will adapt. Agenda Item 3C is File Number PUDSP226. This is a planned unit development and preliminary plan for the villages at Sterling Ranch East. Is there anyone in the audience here other than the applicant for that item? I don't see anyone. Do any of the Commissioners have questions for staff or the applicant? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on File Number PUDSP226.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Shipples.
With regards to Agenda Item 3C, File Number PUDSP226, for the Planned Unit Development Preliminary Plan Villages at Sterling Ranch East, I move for the approval in accordance with the attached resolution with seven conditions and five notations and finding of sufficiency or... and with finding of sufficiency for water quality, quantity, and dependability and that this item be moved to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Shipples.
Second.
Second, Ms. Jack, thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trowbridge.
I just wanted to note, I thought it was interesting that this PUD, I don't know that I've ever seen ADUs explicitly mentioned on a PUD before. I thought that was pretty interesting and it'll be interesting to watch how this develops and goes forward.
Yeah, I agree. Having some lots where that's a, you know, a defined part of the plan and others that aren't, yeah, the whole ADU thing is something that we'll see a lot more of in the future, I think. So, yeah, I agree. Anything else? Okay, we will take a vote now and I'll start down at the end again with Mr. Shipples.
Aye.
Mr. Carlson.
Aye.
Mr. Trowbridge.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Ms. Jack.
Aye.
Mr. Whitney.
Aye.
Mr. Byers.
Aye.
Mr. Mraz.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Again, we will recommend unanimously to the Board of County Commissioners that they approve this application. And we will continue to move on. Agenda Item 3D, File SF2417, the final plat for Misfits Crew Estates. Is there anyone in the audience other than the applicant here for that one? Don't see anyone. Do any Commissioners have any questions for staff or the applicant on this item? No? Okay. Entertain a motion on SF2417. Don't all volunteer at once?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Fuller.
Mr. Chair, with regards to Agenda Item SF2417, a final plat for Misfits Crew Estates, final plat, I move for approval with, in accordance with the attached resolution with, five conditions, five notations, one waiver, and a recommendation of finding of sufficiency with regard to water quality, quantity, and dependability, and that this item be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Fuller, Mr. Trowbridge. Any discussion on this item? Not necessarily. Okay, we'll start at the other end now. Mr. Mraz.
Aye.
Mr. Byers.
Aye.
Mr. Whitney.
Aye.
Ms. Jack.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Trowbridge.
Aye.
Mr. Carlson.
Aye.
And Mr. Shipples.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye as well. Again, we'll vote to, vote is nine to zero to recommend this item for approval. We'll submit it to the Board of County Commissioners for final action. Moving right along, Agenda Item 3E, SF2423. And I'm still looking on my sheet to make sure I'm in the right place, so bear with me. This is the final plat for Rolling Hills Estates filing number three. Is there anyone in the audience other than the applicant here for that item? Seeing none. Any Commissioners have any questions for staff or the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Whitney.
If I could please, I'm going to bother our good legal counsel. I mentioned to her before that I might, if I recall, this is the one that has a request for a waiver of the 300-year rule. And she did a spectacular job of explaining that in her letter. But having said that, I think this is a hot enough topic to where it's probably worth on the record having her talk to that a little bit.
Okay, I agree. I think the staff package was good on that. It's a unique situation and, but we would appreciate to hear Ms. Seago for the record again, just to reiterate your thoughts on that item, on that waiver request.
Thank you, Lori Seago, County Attorney's Office. So, the water supply provisions in the subdivision section of the Land Development Code contain pages of requirements detailing what applicants must provide in order to demonstrate sufficient quality, quantity, and dependability. That's the standard that's set forth in statute. Statute requires that a final plat cannot be approved unless the Board of County Commissioners makes a finding of sufficient quality, quantity, and dependability. State statute does not give any further details about how to get to that finding. So, in order to comply with that, El Paso County had adopted these, the water provisions, the water supply provisions of the Land Development Code. Again, they include details about what kind of information must be provided, the court decrees and water determinations that allocate water rights to a particular piece of property, compliance with any augmentation plans if we're talking about wells. Requirements are different for central water supply systems, but probably the biggest part of those regulations is the county's 300-year water rule, which requires that applicants demonstrate regardless of the water supply, that that supply is sufficient to serve the subdivision for 300 years. In this particular case, we have a lot that was illegally created at some time in the past, but that lot has had a well on it since 1972. And that well predates any of the modern statutory provisions regarding the administration of groundwater in Colorado. It also predates our current provisions, water supply provisions in the Land Development Code. So, the property owner in 1972 was able to get a well permit without going to court and getting a court decree. They don't have any decreed water rights. They don't have a determination from the Groundwater Commission. At that time, they were simply able to go to the Division of Water Resources or whatever it was called at the time and get a permit for a well and drill a well. And that was the end of it. That's what they did and that's what they've been using ever since. So, they are at lea... And current law does allow them to continue to use that well without having to come back and comply with any of the current groundwater administration requirements. So keeping that in mind, working with the applicant, it was my recommendation that they request a waiver from all of the water supply requirements in the code, including the 300-year rule, because I felt that was the only way under what they currently have to get to a water sufficiency finding. So it is up to this body whether to recommend that waiver and it'll be up to the Board whether to grant that waiver. I want to be clear that this is not a waiver of the finding itself. You are still asked to make a finding that the proposed water supply is sufficient in terms of quality, quantity, and dependability, but you'll be doing so without much of the information that we usually have and without finding that it's specifically sufficient to supply the, this lot for 300 years. I would note that the estimated demand for this lot is .33 acre feet per year. And the most recent report that we have regarding the pumping rate for that well at 11 gallons per minute is more than adequate to meet that estimated demand. So in terms of simply supply versus demand, it's my recommendation that's adequate. But we can't make a finding that it meets the 300-year rule and they certainly were not able to supply, again, much, many of the other requirements that are in that provision of the code. Nonetheless, it's my recommendation that the, there's no harm to the public and it certainly serves the public welfare to grant that waiver and make that finding.
Thank you very much. And if I may take a minute to thank you for that and staff as a whole on these things, what most people don't see and sometimes we may forget the time and effort that goes into reviewing these things before we see them. We've handled a couple of items very quickly and there's a lot of hours of work that came, that went into those things before we ever saw them. And I think it's important sometimes to recognize that. And I'm sorry if I fail to do that sometimes, but it's important for the public to know too, just how much, how much time and effort the staff spends on these things. We get them and we move on, but they spend hours and hours and hours dealing with this stuff and their professional advice and input on these is essential to us. Mr. Trowbridge.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering, so I also noted that it's a domestic use-only permit, I believe, so they basically can serve the household, but they can't water livestock, do a lot of irrigation for crops and stuff. I believe that's the case. But I had a question for Ms. Seago and that is, if the current well fails, would the owner have to get a new permit or are they allowed to put in a new well using the existing permit? I'm just curious as to that process.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Trowbridge, I don't have the answer to that.
Okay, that's fine.
Any other questions on this? I'll entertain a motion on File Number SF2423, the final plat for Rolling Hills Estates filing number three.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trowbridge.
As regards Agenda Item 3E, File Number SF2423, the final plat for Rolling Hills Estate, filing number three, the final plat, I move we recommend approval in accordance with the attached resolution with five conditions, four notations, and the waiver regarding the water and finding of sufficiency with regard to water quality, quantity, and dependability and that this item be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Trowbridge.
Second.
Second, Mr. Whitney, thank you. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, back to Mr. Mraz.
Aye.
Mr. Byers.
Aye.
Mr. Whitney.
Aye.
Ms. Jack.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Trowbridge.
Aye.
Mr. Carlson.
Aye.
And Mr. Shipples.
Aye.
Thank you. Chair will also vote aye recommending this unanimously to the Board of County Commissioners for their approval. And we will move then out of our consent items into Agenda Item 5A, which is the first of our regular items. And this is File Number SF2415, the final plat for Beresford Subdivision. And Mr. Letky, as you're coming up, I'll recognize Mr. Shipples.
I just want to state that I do know the owners, Beresford, I've worked with them on other projects. I don't have any interest in this. I haven't lent them money on this. I don't have any interest in this. But for the record, I did want to say that I do know them, I have worked with them. I am going to continue to vote. I believe I can be impartial on this, but I just wanted to make it a record that I do know the owners and have worked with them in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Shipples. Mr. Letky, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission. My name is Joseph Letky. I am the planner for the Beresford Subdivision Final Plats. This is Project SF2415. Charlene Durham was the engineer that reviewed and was on this project with me. Public input, if you're watching remotely, wish to comment, have to please provide your name and a reliable phone number, or you can send us an email at PCDhearings@elpassoco.com. I have the hearing procedure. We start off with staff presentation. Once that's completed, we move to the applicant's presentation, then some public comments, there's a rebuttal, questions, and then the final decision. So this is a final plat request by Christopher Beresford and Amy Beresford for the approval of four-lot subdivision within the RR5 zoning district. The parcel size is 19.88 acres, which does permit, or RR5 does permit five-acre lots. However, the lots that are going to be created will be 4.97 acres in size. I will address this moving forward in my following slides. The property is located on the north side of East Gosock Road. It's approximately one mile north of the intersection of Gosock and Hodgson Road. Planning Commission, I know you're very familiar with the criteria of approval, but just for anyone watching, I will leave this on for a few seconds. So in regard to the lot size, we're in the RR5 zoning district. However, because we're just short of that 20 acres, the applicant did request the approval for the PCD director to have a minor variation during plating to allow this slightly smaller lot size. Minor variations to plating shall be allowed only after a finding by the PCD director that the variation does not constitute a substantial change to the allowed land use and that no substantial detriment to the public good, no harm to the general purpose intent of this code will be caught. The PCD director has approved this request pursuant to Section 5.5.1G of the Land Development Code. Specifically, some considerations that were mentioned and considered was that the difference in the lot size is under 1% of the required minimum acreage for the RR5 zoning district. If this property was adjacent to a sectioned light road, if it was farther down south of where it is now, there would be allowance of reduction in lot size by .25 acres to bring that total to 4.75. And this request and approval is specific to this specific application request and will not be considered as a precedent for other requests. In consideration of the two criteria for minor variation in the process outlined by the code, the director could not find that the specific request and small amount of change in lot size would be a detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding community. Planning Commissioners, are there any questions regarding these minor variations during plating? So Section 5.5.1G defines this request and this is the criteria of approval. This doesn't come up too frequently, so I will leave this up for a few seconds to, for the general public. Next, we do have a zoning map. Majority of the area described is within the RR5 zoning district. However, to the east, there is some property that is zoned RR2.5, as well as a small little node of commercial, and then A35 to the northeast.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Trowbridge.
I'm sorry, could you go back? Yeah. Didn't we approve a rezone for that commercial plot that's in the corner? Is it, isn't, is that, isn't that Hodgson and Meridian?
I believe so. If I'm not familiar with that project, however, it may be that our GIS system just hasn't been updated with that resolution.
Okay, because I believe they, I believe that was redone to, back to RR2.5, but...
Okay.
Just...
Mr. Chair, that's the winsome commercial that was rezoned.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kilgore, for clarifying.
Thank you. Master plan elements, this property is located in the large lot residential place type. We're in a minimal change undeveloped area, and then we're in the forest areas, the key area for this specific request. At this point, I'll turn over to Engineering to go over any transportation items.
Charlene Durham with Department of Public Works Engineering. So, as stated earlier, this project is approximately a mile north on Hodgson. The access for the site is going to be through Gosock Road. They call it east and west as it's basically a looped road that connects to Hodgson Road. The lots two and four, which are the ones directly off Gosock, will have direct driveway access from that roadway. Lots one and three, which are on the north half of the site, will have a shared driveway that runs right through the middle between lots two and four. This development's approximately going to have 38 new daily trips, and this will be subject to the county road impact fee. So any questions on transportation? As for drainage, there are no FEMA flood plains in the area. It is within the West Kaioa Creek Drainage Basin. As you can see, most of the drainage ends up going towards the east via the natural swells within the site. There is no actual proposed grading at this point, and the natural drainage swells will be, continue to be utilized. And since there was no grading proposed currently, there are no water quality or detention ponds also, based on the large lot size as well. And there are no associated drainage or bridge fees within this drainage basin. So, any questions on drainage? Okay.
So, public notification on February 4th, 2025, Planning Community Development Department mailed notices to 12 surrounding property owners of the public hearing dates, and also the applicant posted the public hearing notice on their property. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions for myself or Engineering?
Any questions for staff before we hear from the applicant? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Anne Reese with Vertex Consulting. I'm going to make this pretty brief, and then if there are any questions, you can definitely feel free to ask, whatever that might be. that might be. Okay, so Joe already covered this, but just a quick reminder, this is a request for a four-lot minor subdivision. There's also a request for a waiver of the county criteria that all roads have frontage onto a public roadway. Gosock is an existing private loop road, so it is not meeting that criteria. And then Joe covered as well that the minor variation has already been approved. Joe already covered this, but it's surrounded by RR5 properties. The zoomed-in version does help you to see that there are also other five-acre lot parcels that are within the vicinity, so this area is starting to develop from those larger 20 acres down to five-acre parcels. I'm not going to cover all of the various reports. I'm just going to give you a list of the reports that have been submitted and reviewed by El Paso County and the other outside agencies as well, and there are no outstanding comments on any of these reports that have been submitted.
Mr. Chair.
Trowbridge.
Sorry, Ms. Reese. Yes, thank you. Obviously, out in the forest wildfire hazard, has the property owner done, to your knowledge, has the property owner done any active mitigation of forest, or is that planned?
He has. He shook his head. He has done some thinning. I know when I've visited the site, I've noticed that some of the low-lying timbers have been thinned, so I've observed that personally, that that's been done. But the forestry management plan and wildfire hazard mitigation plan also discuss additional thinning that would need to happen with the construction of each home to ensure proper defensible space.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I'll move on. So Joe covered this, so I'll just briefly go through the master plan. It's within the forested key area, which discusses as long as what you're proposing is within the character of the surrounding area that the forested key area can support. As I showed, there are other five-acre parcels in the area, so this is definitely in line. It's under the minimal-change undeveloped, which discusses vacant, underutilized sites being developed. And then large-lot residential place type does recommend lot sizes as small as two and a half acres. That's not directly in the vicinity, so the property owner chose not to rezone and create two and a half acre, and instead it's the lots that are just slightly There is no planned parks or trails within the vicinity. There is no planned right-of-way either, and the mineral rights have not been severed. Just for background, for the waiver request, Falcon Fire does not have any issues or concerns with the waiver. They have utilized Gosock for many, many years and haven't encountered any issues with utilizing that roadway. It is, on average, 20 feet in width, so you can have two-way travel on the road. It's actually a very, very well-maintained private road. As we know, the county has struggled with roadway maintenance, so if this road were to be transferred from a private road to a public road, it may actually result in the road being not maintained as well as it is today, simply because right now the property owners all work together to ensure that it's maintained very consistently. It would also require that all 30-plus property owners agree to dedicating right-of-way to El Paso County, which, as I'm sure you can all understand, would be quite challenging. Are there any questions?
Mr. Trowbridge.
Yes, thanks. So you just mentioned that private road. I was just curious, maybe I should have asked engineering, but driveway spacing, since the two lots that butt Gosock will have driveways, and then you've got the common access in the middle, is the driveway spacing going to work out?
So the applicant, the property owner, actually, prior to Vertex coming on board, hired LDC, or sorry, LSC, to prepare a traffic study that analyzed those driveways in addition to Gosock itself, and that traffic study identified that the spacing is met and that there's no issues with site visibility.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Ruiz? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Is there any discussion? We said no questions. Anything back for staff? All right. I will then entertain a motion on Agenda Item 5A, the final plat.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Public comment.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes. This is a regular item. This is a regular item. So yes. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? I see none. Thank you for making sure that I filled all the squares, dotted the i's, crossed the t's. Somebody's got to do that to keep me straight. Now, I will entertain a motion on file number SF-2415, the final plat for Bearisford Subdivision. Chair. Mr. Carlson.
Mr. Chair, in regards to Agenda Item 5A, file number SF-2415, or final plat, Bearisford Subdivision Final Plat, I move for approval in accordance with the attached resolution with six conditions, five notations, and one waiver with a finding of sufficiency for water quality, quantity, and dependability, and that this item be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Second from Mr. Byers. Thank you. Any final discussion on this item? I see none. Okay. Mr. Mraz.
Aye.
Mr. Byers.
Aye.
Mr. Whitney.
Aye.
Ms. Jack.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Trowbridge.
Aye.
Mr. Carlson.
Aye.
Mr. Schippels.
Aye.
And the chair also votes aye. We will recommend this to the Board of County Commissioners for their final approval. Thank you all very much. We have one more item on our agenda. We've moved along quite well. Thank you for that. And now we'll turn it over and look at Agenda Item 5B, which is file number MP-232. This is an amendment to the county master plan for the Jimmy Camp Creek Drainage Basin Planning Study. It is, but I managed to get through it.
Good morning, Planning Commission. Jeff Rice with Engineering, and Christina Preddy was the project manager on this. She's here also. I'm not sure if the presentation is in this folder, or let's see, go back to...
You're messing with you.
And I don't know that we really need the presentation, so we went through the December 5th. But I can pull it up just in case there's any questions. Probably December 20 something. No, empty. Ryan, do you know where this is?
Oh, boy.
Did I just miss it? Oh, sorry. It is... So this is just kind of where we're at on... Oops, wrong thing. There it is. So we were here last month, in January, for the first presentation of this. Didn't seem to be too many questions or concerns. This is the hearing to actually approve the master plan, or this part of the master plan is the drainage basin master, drainage basin planning study is part of the master plan. Yeah. So we have had a few minor changes and updates. We're still going through the report itself, cleaning things up, and we have an ADA compliance phase that we'll have to go through before it's final on the webpage. So there's still some minor changes going on, but we're not changing the content or recommendations or anything that's in the report. We're also working on the fee calculation, which would go to the drainage board for approval or recommendation, and then Board of County Commissioners for approval. And it's kind of a little bit higher than the normal range of fees currently, but it's kind of what we're expecting for this type of basin with the way the drainways are and just the amount of erosion and things that could occur. So I guess if there's any questions, I don't know if I need to go through any of this. So this is just to adopt part of the master plan, examples of other elements of the master plan. The Falcon and Hagler were the other most recent drainage basin planning study updates in 2015. And this does set the fees for the development in the area. Just to note, there are a lot of areas within this basin that are being annexed by the city, so that's going to affect the fees in the future. They had the Carmant Line annexation recently, and that had just a small part that was in this basin, but it took out some acreage. So we'll look to see what adjustments might need to happen with that in the future. But right now, the main developments are Bull Hill, Roing Meadows is coming in, Larson Ranch is almost built out. There's a few things going on in the Glen at Widefield. I think that one's almost complete. Those are kind of the main developments that are going on currently, and I don't see any public comments. We'll also send a kind of a notice out to public on the fees if they want to participate in any comments on the fee calculations.
Any questions on this? I'm sure we all read all 700 pages, whatever there was there. Okay. Thank you. We have no questions. Any discussion?
Just appreciate all the hard work that goes into something like this. Very...
And we thank our consultant, too. They did most of the work.
I guess, how much more, how many more of these are there that we have, that we'll be looking at to amend the master plan, or it's kind of a rotating cycle?
That's a good question. We do want, we're going to try to look at one or two. We have an interest account from the drainage fund, and we're going to look at spending some of that money on doing an updated study. I'm looking at a couple areas right now. I don't know if we're really, if I have a decision yet, but to get another one going, to use that money that's sitting there to get something updated. We're also doing, DPW is doing an update on the, or trying to get accredited under APWA. So that process is going to take a few years, but that also involves doing a drainage master plan, which ties into the basins and improvements and what needs to be done to maintain those improvements and things that need to be done in the future. And that will, that'll kind of give us an umbrella to where we start looking next as far as what areas need improvements or what areas need to be studied in more detail. So once that kind of overall study goes, that's probably going to be probably around three years when that gets into full process. They're doing an assessment of the current existing facilities. There's an RFP that they're getting ready. I don't know if that went out yet, but it's someone consultant would, will go out and look at all of our existing facilities and the condition of those and what their capacities are. And then based on that, then we'll start that other drainage master plan that takes that up to the next level to see what all needs to be done. So there are a few things that we're trying to get going.
We'll see you again.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion on file number MP-232. Mr. Trowbridge is ready.
Thank you. As regards Agenda Item 5B, file number MP-232, an amendment to the county master plan regarding the Jimmy Camp Creek Drainage Basin Planning Study.
Easy for you to say.
I move that we approve this amendment in accordance with the attached resolution with two conditions and two notations.
You are a brave man to take that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Trowbridge.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Mraz. You've filled my bingo sheet now, since you've contributed with a second on this. So good to see that everyone's playing along. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before I call the roll? Mr. Mraz.
Aye.
Mr. Byers.
Aye.
Mr. Whitney.
Aye.
Ms. Jack.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Trowbridge.
Aye.
Mr. Carlson.
Aye.
Mr. Schippels.
Aye.
And the chair will also vote aye. We will again recommend this to the Board of County Commissioners for their approval. I appreciate the unity and the collegiality of this. Thank you very much, and we'll look forward to next time. Mr. Trowbridge first.
Before we adjourn, I just wanted to remind folks that we are still working on the Land Development Code update. Mr. Mraz and I are participating in that, in that working group, and there is a meeting next week, so that is moving along. And I don't know if Ms. Harrington or Mr. Kilgore want to add anything to that, but that process is moving along.
Okay. And at the appropriate time, I just make sure that we get, put something on the agenda to give us a more formal update, so I don't forget that that's happening and forget to ask where we are with that process. But, and I don't recall what the goal, what the end goal timeline looks like for that.
A long time.
A long time.
October 2026 would be our goal.
Okay.
I expect it will run a bit longer than that even, potentially. And we will schedule the consultant to come here and give you an update after this stakeholder meeting next week. I believe there is a schedule for a community meeting, like a town hall meeting. And so when those start, the consultant will come here and kind of give you a briefing on where we're at, and then we'll have the community meetings. But they release the draft in modules, and so this is just the first module dealing with uses districts and zone district standards. So it's just a piece of the whole, but we will get something formal on here. I think we're just a month or so away from that.
No, I appreciate the fact that it's a very large undertaking, and thank you, Mr. Trowbridge, Mr. Mraz, for representing us in that, in that process. I think it'll benefit greatly from your experience and your insights. So thank you for that, and we look forward to Mr. Kilgore buying us lunch next time. And with that, we are adjourned until March 6. Thank you.